That mean there's potential.
Yeah, Doug is on line.
Captain will be a little late.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll call peace of statement.
Mr. Ingraham.
Here.
Mrs. Brackman.
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Here.
Mr. Canwisher. Mrs. Kumko. Mrs. Rivera.
Here.
Dr. Wugley.
Here. You rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
Can't have the board approve the agenda as presented?
Well, Ms. Hoskins, I go Mr. Ayers to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And then I will also take a motion for an, uh, an executive session, please.
I hope that the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one J of the open meetings law to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the school district would have to pay or lower the price the district would receive for the property.
Well, Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one J of the open meetings law to discuss a purchase or sale of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the school district would have to pay or lower the price the district would receive for the property. We'll call vote peace of statement.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brackman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay, um, vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If there's anything anybody would like to say, um, uh, regarding a nonagent item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Anybody here always interested in saying anything? Uh, we will move on to board members. Ms. Brockman.
I have nothing, thank you.
Rivera.
I have nothing.
Um, Hoskins.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Mr. Ayers.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Canwisher, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Flingsmith.
I have nothing.
Pion.
Thank you.
Kenyon.
I have nothing.
Uh, Mr. Zimmer.
I do have something.
Let me hold off for just a minute, uh, this dayman.
Yes, it was an updated personal agenda and also open enrollment information is updated.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Uh, Mr. Struce.
Yes, I have a few things this evening. First of all, I wanna, we have four retirees that we learned of this last week. I wanna recognize each of them for their years of service to Pleasant Valley in various positions. First of all, Darlene Carchato, sixteen years at Riverdale Heights as one of our assistants down there in the office. She'll be retiring here. Sandy Cration, similar position at the high school, eighteen years in Pleasant Valley, um, in the ministry of assistant role there. Uh, Tammy Stelk, one of our aides at Pleasant View Elementary for fifteen years. And one that, uh, I received a wonderful letter from her was Paula Wakeland. After forty-four years in Pleasant Valley, she will be retiring. And what was so neat about it was, in her husband's words, she could've wrote this in two sentences, but she sent me a page about the history of her time in Pleasant Valley. It was just fun to read, um, from when she moved here as a sixth grader to where she is today. And I got to first meet her when I was the dean of students at the junior high. She was driving bus at the time when I was the dean, so I knew Paula quite well when she drove the tan route. So it was just a nice trip down Mamory Lane and she signed it with signing off after forty-four years. So congratulations to Paula Wakeland on her retiree here as well. Um, the last thing I have tonight with, with the heavy and sad in heart, um, to share with all of you tonight, that Rich Menke, um, husband of Deb Menke, who was with us for eighteen years, passed away Thursday morning. Um, the celebration of life was this morning at ten AM, but just a great man who, um, just, uh, was a great supporter of Pleasant Valley and a great supporter of his wife Debbie and all that she did for us. So just our complete sympathies out to the entire Menke family and everyone there. So, uh, losing a good man, so.
Thank you, Mr. Struce. Okay, back to you, Mr. Zimmer.
All right. Well, I look back on my board recognition a year ago and be honored, same things. Pleasant Valley High School Business and Personal Finance Instructor Rita Brown had forty-five students take the UNI Personal Finance exam with thirty-five passing to earn three hours of UNI college credit. Seventy-eight percent success rate and large participation ranks as one of the top in Iowa. The total number of students passing during the first semester is more than both semesters last year combined. Due to the increased participation and success and success rate, Ms. Brown has been asked to serve on UNI's Department Advisory Board. So just kudos on both our students and power of teaching. So anyway, last year we had recognized when seventeen students pass that. So not for some, but for all. And then also, uh, Director Christina Myatt had thirteen students compete in regional individuals, um, article of speech contest with nine students receiving a division one and four division two. And those receiving division one will go on to compete at state on Saturday, February fourth, twenty twenty-three at Cedar Rapids, Washington. Wish them the best.
Great.
Mr. Zimmer, has, um, Rita Brown always taught that personal finance class? What does Janine Murphy teach?
It, it has, it has moved around.
Okay.
So, but, uh, Janine was also very successful and she was actually the one that got us connected with UNI's, uh, program.
Okay.
Exam, so.
So do we just have one teacher for that right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, um, are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Hoskins, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The approval of bills. I will take general fund.
We have one warrant issued in the total amount of six hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and two dollars and seventy-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nutrition Fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, we will go with the high school activity fund next.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Management Fund.
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and ten dollars in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera, that the management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Capital Projects Fund.
I move that capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the capital project fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Pepper Fund.
I move that Pepper Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eighty-one thousand, three hundred and two dollars and thirty-one cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the Pepper Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Student Construction Fund.
I move that the student construction fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera, that the student construction fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Internal Service Fund.
I move that internal service fund warrant sixty-four sixty-four to sixty-four sixty-nine be issued in the total amount of five hundred and thirty thousand, thirty dollars and fifty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the internal service fund warrant sixty-four sixty-four to sixty-four sixty-nine be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then Trust Fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to old business.
Do you think that we need to adjust the rule so he can make the motion and second it too?
Right?
I didn't think I could do that.
Yeah, obviously you can't do that.
He was trying though.
I'm sure he will, but, um, for the benefit of all of us, I'm probably right.
I'm just like hearing my name.
Yeah. Um, so going on to old business, if you guys remember last time, we did, um, have, um, um, a gentleman here who did all of our, um, redistricting, uh, map that you guys had a chance to look at over the last couple of weeks. And so today we have to, um, approve of the updated director district map, right? Mr. Struce, you wanna?
Sure. You bet. Um, Beth, if you currently have our current one up there, could you go to propose number three and I'll kind of walk through that one there? Yep, that'd be great, right there. Um, remember when we look at this map, our goal was to try to get around three thousand, seven hundred and twenty, um, members or constituents in each of those attendance areas. When you look at the map down below, even though it's very small print, you can see the range in that third column, how far they are, how close they are to the three thousand, seven hundred and twenty equal balance across all seven. When you look at this map again, um, it was basically on the west side of the district. It's shifting things up. So when you look at originally where number five was, five moved into six, six moved into seven, seven moved into three because three was our greatest population where we have the most people, um, where most subdivisions are taking place right now. We also noticed that four is a pretty popular area in terms of subdivisions. So one also pushed into area three and into four a little bit, um, creating that area at that point. So the only other change, when you look along Canal Shore and Leclerc, um, around the exterior of where the river would be, that is now all one before we're part of that was number two as well. Um, one that we talked about last time was trying to create clean lines as much as possible so people know on main, uh, roadways that's kind of the cutting line of where their precincts or where the director districts would be. Um, all of them have an elementary school minus one, which is, uh, director's district number six. Um, but again, six is very close to, uh, Riverdale Heights and also between Hopewell Elementary. So overall, when we looked at the, the two maps that were given to us, um, it is my recommendation that we look at this one the most closely. Um, but again, you guys can answer questions or ask questions here this evening. Um, but once we have questions answered, we'll go through a public hearing and then go into a motion as well. Um, at that point, if we approve one of these tonight, then we'll get back in touch with, uh, Mr. Addy and we will get ones for online. We'll get printed copies of them so people know come our next election after July one that these are in place and ready to go.
So is this effective like right now, once we make the motion, or is it at the next election?
No, so it goes into effect, don't quote me, it's May some.
May, it's, he said May.
It was May, like May fifteenth, we had to have it done by. So we're in a very good place.
Okay.
But I think it's really done by May first to be in place for July first.
The only question I had was, uh, Canal Shore Drive down to the river, um, might be a little confusing. I don't know why that, why District One kind of surrounds District Two.
Yeah, so direct District One right now, I don't know how many people are down in that area as to why they did that. There was originally a bump out in the second proposal, um, that kind of split it. There's a real small. Can you go back to proposal one, Beth, by chance? When you look at one, that's current right there, is all of that section there. Right there, thank you. Note, there's a little green section, so for whatever reason, trying to balance that out, um, we asked about that piece. So in the next one, he took that little bump out and just made it all, all the way around there. So using the highway as the dividing line. Cause ninety-seven and thirty-three, I think, are the difference numbers there. Yeah, ninety-seven and thirty-three.
Canal Shore Drive the dividing one.
It is.
And there's nobody on the riverside.
Right.
Or no houses.
Well, it goes all the way. I'd have to drive that area and, and there's some houses along the river down there. This is also include.
Be the north side of Canal Shore Drive where the houses are.
So that's gonna be Director District One?
One, everything along the river there.
It'd be interesting to see how many houses are there, just to know like why that would have to, cause it would make more sense for
Go down.
District Four, just to go straight south there, right? Isn't that what, oh, one?
One.
No.
It was two before.
Oh, you're right there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we just never asked. So that question would be, when you look at it up here on the screen, so in the one proposal, he had this section here being purple. This was all green, green up here. And then this proposal came back with putting it all. So here's Canal Shore Drive there. The highway runs right through here. I just don't know how many homes there are along here along the river.
So basically.
Cause here's great river road that runs right there.
Right, and there's also condos.
Condos on.
On Canal Shore Drive, on the north, on the, on the, well, it'd be the northwest side of Canal Shore Drive. You've got a cup, uh, there's one condo complex that would be, it, um, the, if you keep going north after Beer Stube, that entry road on there, there's, um, a gray, um, condo complex. I th- I don't know exactly how many units there are. I think it's four. Probably approximately twenty homes that way alone.
Yellow line is the, right?
Let me.
Do you want me to draw it up like a eagle map? Would that be helpful?
The yellow lines are the voter precincts.
Correct.
The, the blue is the old line.
If there are not, then I will open up a public hearing for this. Does anybody have any questions regarding the new draft on the proposal? Public hearing closed. So, sounds like people are interested in, I guess we would call it plan- The proposed plan. Which is, which is up there right now, the Director District Proposal there. If that is the case and people would like that, then I will take a motion for approval. Now, see one on our sheet here, but actually there is one.
I move the board approve the revised Director District Map prepared by Mapping Strategies LLC.
First by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approved the revised Director District Map prepared by Mapping Strategies LLC as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to old business on a second item, it's the approval of the PV High School Spartan Track and Turf Project and the Pleasant Valley Junior High Track Project. Mr. Struce and Leland are here.
I'll let Leland kind of go through the project with you, as you saw, we had our bid opening on January 17th. We had one company, Midwest Field and Turf and Midwest Track and Tennis and Track Company. It's basically the same company, they just break it up in two different ones, when it comes to the track, it comes to the turf. We had one other bidder that had decided to pull out that morning, so we opened up this bid. We did have one more bid that came in, let's see, that was the 17, must've been three days, two days or three days?
Two days later.
Two days later that came in the mail, so we did not open it up and returned it to the company and let them know. But at this time, I'll let Leland kind of walk through information so you're aware. There was a good question about the project, you can see the costs that are there. The original cost of this project, we had anticipated 1.6 million dollars. The 1.6, cause we didn't know what the sub base was gonna look like when we take it apart and some drainage issues that we were having. But with all that figured in, some alternatives, you'll see that we are right around just over a million dollars with this project. So, Leland, why don't you go ahead and kind of explain this, so everybody knows about the bid project?
Well, we, originally we took the project and we split it in half. We, so we did the, the track and then we did the field, we separated them hoping to get more bidders. In this case, it just, it didn't turn out, we still ended up with one bidder, but, but the numbers came in good, so we're good. The original, we had the 1.6 budgeted in the five-year plan, but, but then we went and got cost projections. The cost projection for the actual field turf, $644,500. Their base bid was $586,540. We did offer an alternate, $9,400 to upgrade the turf to another turf. That wasn't available at the time, cause of supply chain issues. But would take it from an eight-year warranty to a 10-year one. Brian's got the samples there.
So we'll pass those around, so you look at them and what the difference is, if you look at the two grasses, the one grass is all the same, it's a very narrow one. The upgrade, if you look at it, there's a, the narrow- Yep, the narrow grass plus a wider blade grass, when you look at the two. So the wider blade grass is the one that is the upgrade.
So, so the cost for the turf underneath our projected cost were $57,960, $57,960 under our projected cost. So, if we look at the actual, the track part of it, projected cost was 373,200. The base bid for that was 404,500. So that part, we were over our projected cost by $31,300. But if we take both the bids together and combine them, we're actually $26,660 under. So, and if we do accept the alternate bid, we'll still be $17,600, $17,600 under. So. And they said the two big differences are the eight, one's got an eight-year warranty, the other one's has 10. And the one with the 10-year warranty is supposed to have better UV protection. It does, it feels softer, I think it does.
Yeah, I think so too.
Maybe that means less protective than, right?
Well, you will find out. Leland can share with you, there are all different, the blades of grass are all different lengths based upon the sport that you have. Because ours is a soccer and a football, is a longer bladed grass. But you don't really recognize it once you put the rubber inside it and so forth, but-
Yeah, ours is considered a multi-purpose. Although it's just, there's actually 12 different kinds of grass, which I was kind of surprised by that. But it depends if you're doing field hockey, soccer, football, it just depends on what you're using it for.
Is there any change, difference in, in maintenance for either one of these, if you choose one over the other?
Maintenance is the same. So, yeah, they actually use the same equipment, there's equipments for being provided with this, with the turf, and it's the same equipment.
We have that, we have that revitalizer to pull behind, don't we?
We do, but they said it's different for this turf.
So, we're kind of, as you said, 17,000 under budget, correct? When you include-
We include it.
And you add the extra.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Do these types of projects ever seem to have change orders where, like we do with other construction projects? Or are you pretty confident that 17,000?
We actually have-
We won't need that 17,000 as a buffer.
We also have contingency money in the project. I'm not sure if I've got that number written down, I want to say it's about $70,000 in contingency. So if we do run into issues, there's coverage for that. And if not, we get that money back.
Okay.
Leland, do they, back in the material that's holding that surface down now? I mean, cause there was probably what, eight of those big huge bags? And then they just keep going back and forth and back and forth, spreading it down there. How do they get it back up and then what do they do with that? I mean, is that reusable, or what do they do with that?
Not sure, I think they used a lot of it, to be honest. In terms of the black rubber that's in there?
Yeah.
I think it's the same product.
Yeah, it's a mix of sand and that rubber, they go down because that's what gets tracked out of the high school non-stop. We pick up at least a couple of bags, but in the vacuum. The band people, it just trapes it.
What was the price difference again between the two turf?
9,400.
9,400.
9,400.
So it's a $9,400 difference and then you gain the two years of warranty as well. Which the, I forgot the current life of ours, where are we at right now for years?
We're about 10 or 11, at least, yeah.
So the warranty is for 10 years, do we expect it to last longer, or?
We expect it to last longer. I think the one thing that they, I'll just be honest, they, the, I don't think they understa- understood how important it was to rejuvenate it, that you need to be out there weekly or whatever the recommendations are. So it wasn't being maintained properly.
That'd be an accurate statement, when we had the company come back out, probably three years ago, to try to get the grass to stand back up, they just said the maintenance was not taken care of like it should have been. And that they tried everything they possibly could, but they said it was just to the point where it was done.
So what's the plan moving forward on this and the maintenance of this?
Wherever they recommend.
You'll make sure that, you guys talk.
Yep. Mike can come back in retirement.
Actually, on the new design, it looks like there's a lot less of, of gluing all the different stuff that we put on that last one. Because what they do is, it means me, you lay that all down and then they're out there with the clippers and they're just shaving it down to nothing, and then they bring the other mat in, they glue it down, they stick it down in there, and then they got weights on it and they're trying to adhere it. And I was, that's what that whole center, that whole-
The logo was.
The whole logo thing is all glued down on there, so.
So when you say that there's this warranty, what is the warranty cover?
Warranties are always a gray area. So we, we don't really have the fine print, it's just total replacement, so if you have a total failure for some reason. You know, but it's the same thing, if we're not maintaining it, they, our warranty is void. So as long as we're maintaining it, it should cover everything.
There's no advantage as far as performance of athletes on either turf or anything like that? It's mostly just the warranty, the UV protection.
Correct. Yeah, there's two different fibers in there, and the, the one fiber is the same, and then there's, one of them's different. But if you actually went on their website and looked at it, it's the two core fibers that they've used. It's, it's like their base products that they've used as far as longevity. They've been around for quite a while too, in the upgraded product, in the upgraded product.
If you see this installed, it sounds like a big carpet on the back of a tractor. And then they've got, I don't know, they had like four guys on one end and four guys on the other, big sewing machine, and they just hand stitched the rolls together.
Is it all hand stitched?
Yep, the whole thing, it was this monster sewing machine, they just, well, and they sewed the whole together and down it goes and... The only thing holding that thing, the only thing holding that in place is the weight of the sand and the rubber on there, that, that's it.
So this would start, end, I mean, beginning June?
May 28th, that's the date.
Yeah, towards the end of the month. How long will it take?
It'll take us, hopefully, to just a couple of weeks before school starts, so we can have practice on it. But Deanne was already gonna talk to the state, cause they have not come out with the new, cause they just did new pairings for football, with the classification changes, so she's going to ask when they come out the new classification, the new schedules, that we have our first home game, our first game of the year is on the road, hopefully give us some extra time if need be. So, but we don't, they do not anticipate any issues with getting materials. There's been no backlog, so we feel like we are in a good place with the project.
And now that both the track and the turf are being done by the same company, yeah, we should be in good shape.
Cause football season, or the, the practice starts on August 1st, August 1st?
Yeah. I don't know the official date, but it's first or second week of August.
And then the band also starts around that time too, so.
Cause the, yeah, the family week is the last week of July, where there's nothing happening at all.
I have one more question, Leland. On the track surface, is that the granulars that they're gonna sprinkle down by hand and do it across like that? Is that what they're doing? I mean, when I watched that North Scott and I watched it here, they put the adhesive materials down and then they were just sprinkling the granules out by hand. And then, then they came back and they painted the track. And then I just watched the paint just kind of all go to the inside, it's all loose granules that didn't get adhered. They just all went to the inside, you know, it was just handfuls of it, painted handfuls of it. And then we had to come back, paint the track again. So I didn't know if they had improved that process or not.
I can't tell you, Mike, I don't know. I can tell you though, it is like probably the premier company in the state of Iowa. So I'd hope, if you look, if you actually go to their website, there's quite a few colleges and everything else that they've done. So they're not, it's not a fly-by-night company.
No, I'm saying it was, I'm just saying-
Well, this is a different company from that time too, it's not the same company.
Any other questions? Leland or Mr. Struce? If not, I will open this up for a public hearing. So for a public hearing regarding the approval of the Pleasant Valley High School Spartan Stadium Track and Turf and then the Pleasant Valley Junior High Track Project. Anybody have any questions or comments? Dr. Al? Alright, then I'm gonna close the public here.
I move the board accept the low bid of $404,500 from Midwest Tennis and Track Company for the PV High School Spartan Tracks, Spartan Stadium Track and the Pleasant Valley Junior High Track Resurfacing Projects.
Second.
First by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the board accept the low bid of $404,500 from Midwest Tennis and Track Company for the Pleasant Valley High School Spartan Stadium Track and the Pleasant Valley Junior High Track Resurfacing Projects. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
And then I will take another motion, as well regarding the replacement.
I move the board accept the base low bid of $586,540 and the alternative bid number one of $9,400 for a total of $595,940 from Midwest Field Turf, PVHS Spartan Stadium Turf Replacement Project. Second.
First by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board accept the base low bid of $586,540 and the alternate bid number one of $9,400 for a total of $595,940 from Midwest Field Turf for the Pleasant Valley High School Spartan Stadium Turf Replacement Project. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
And now, heading on to new business, our first aspect, thank you, Leland.
Yep.
Is regarding the Board of Education 2023 through 2024 Board Meeting Calendar, Mr. Struce?
As you go through, you note again that typically it's very similar, we've had in the past with the second and fourth Mondays of the month, being our, our monthly meetings. In July, we have the one in the middle of the month, which is July 17th. We always have one in December and then one in March due to spring break. As you look through that, you'll also note that there are a couple that have a 5:30 start, which is February and April due to anticipated concerts. And then in May, on Tuesday would be the day after Memorial Day, is why that one is on a Tuesday. Just a reminder that we usually do all of our scheduling for concerts and all those type of things in April. So we may have a change in one of these 5:30 starts, but we'll make sure we publicize that well ahead of time, should these dates be different once concerts are scheduled. But at least this puts us on the calendar for the upcoming year. Again, very similar what you've seen in the past.
Any questions regarding this? It looks pretty similar in the past, and then there have been a few times where we've had to change it because of different conflicts with board members, and then we do that, we will. But I think that if you can maybe plan in your schedule, the second and fourth Mondays are usually when we would meet, except for the months of July, December, and March. Any questions? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the 2023-24 Board Meeting Schedule as presented.
First by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve the 2023-24 Board Meeting Schedule as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
And now moving on to the next new business item, is the December monthly financial reports.
Alright, we're halfway through another fiscal year here at the end of December. In looking at the December monthly financials, I did not see anything that stood out to me as unusual. Everything seems to be going where we would project it to be at this point in the fiscal year. Our general fund, fund balance, you can see on the first page is about $150,000 higher than it was at this time a year ago. Again, not, not anything unusual, that's about where we would project it to be at this point in the fiscal year. So I take any questions, if anybody has any questions.
It looks like the property tax revenue that was lagging behind, it seems pretty much caught up now.
Yes, that's correct, it does appear to have caught up.
Other questions for Mr. Klinge Smith? Have you heard anything regarding the submission regarding the- Heard anything regarding the um, submission regarding the um. You know, the, the reporting and award.
Uh, no, it'll be, it'll be a few more months before we find out about that.
Okay.
Actually, last year, the Government Finance Officers Association took about six or seven months before we found out.
Oh, really?
So, yeah.
There are no other questions, then I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial report for December as presented.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for December as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman. Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. And that is it for um, the public meeting part. Then we still have an exempt session item to go through, so thank you very much.